Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting of November 3rd. The first meeting in public after the change of time, so we'll poll everybody to see who would rather have it stay daylight savings or standard time or so, but anyway, thank you so very much for being here tonight. This time I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Moore to please call the roll.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Tharp?
Here.
Councilmember Noble?
Here.
Councilmember Dugo?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Tonight, we're gonna have CJ Lahaney lead us in the pledge, so CJ, please come up.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice.
Our first item is the approval of the agenda. There are no changes from the way it was presented, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Dugo, second by Mr. Noble, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Now it's time for comments from the public on agenda items. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on the agenda items, this is your opportunity, so please come forward and give us your name. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll go to special business. We have two items today, both of them really special evening. The first one is the swearing-in of our new council member, and along with that appointment comes that your daughter is permanently gonna be invited to lead the pledge. So, Ms. McHugh and Ms. Moore.
And you're gonna raise your hand ring, repeat after me, okay? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Alyssa Lahaney.
A citizen of the state of Florida and the United States of America.
A citizen of the state of Florida and the United States of America.
And being an officer of the city of Green Acres, Florida.
And being an officer of the city of Green Acres, Florida.
And a recipient of public funds as such officer.
And a recipient of public funds as such officer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
The state of Florida.
And the city of Green Acres.
And of the city of Green Acres, Florida.
Congratulations, Ms. Lahaney.
Thank you.[295.33][295.33](APPLAUSE).
So, Ms. Lahaney, please join us on the dais. So, welcome aboard, and if you'd like to make any comments.
Thank you, no, thank you all. I appreciate you guys having me, and I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
I have to tell you that one of the things that I ask our city manager, I always ask members of the council to read any proclamations, so I was hoping there would be one that we would hand to you as you got up here tonight and just really welcome you. So, thank you so much and welcome aboard. Our next item on the agenda is presentation of the pending award, pending for our firefighters, so I'd like to invite Chief Cons to please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Shaw, Deputy Mayor Diaz, city council, city manager Ms. McHugh. Thank you for allowing us time this evening to, for this promotional badge ceremony. Tonight is, is a moment of pride and achievement. The badge we wear is more than a symbol. It represents service, dedication, and the trust placed in us by the community. Each promotion marks not only personal accomplishments, but also the continued commitment to lead by example, to uphold our values, and to guide others with integrity and courage. To the four receiving new badges tonight, congratulations. You've earned this honor through hard work, professionalism, and perseverance, as your new rank brings new responsibility. May it also bring new renewed purpose and pride in your work you do every day. To the families, friends, and colleagues here supporting our NREs, thank you. Your encouragement and sacrifice makes this possible. As these badges are pinned, may they serve a reminder of both where you've been and where you're headed. A symbol of honor, accountability, and continued service. When your name is called, please come up with your family for your badge pinning. The first badge being presented tonight is for the rank of Assistant Fire Chief. Brian Brady has been promoted from the rank of Division Chief to Assistant Fire Chief. I did have a one-page excerpt of each employee, and I decided that your time is more precious, so come on up, Brian Brady.[479.16][479.16](APPLAUSE). They don't have to actually pin it through the uniform anymore. We used, we had too much bloodstains, so now we have. The next, the next badge is, is for the rank of Division Chief. Wayne Kenner has been promoted from Fire Rescue Captain to Fire Rescue Division Chief. Come on up, Wayne Kenner.[539.01][539.01](APPLAUSE). Kyle Morgeron is being promoted from the rank of Fire Rescue Lieutenant to Fire Rescue Captain. Congratulations, Kyle, come on up.[592.73][592.73](APPLAUSE). It's Connor Klotz has been promoted from the rank of Firefighter Paramedic to Fire Rescue Lieutenant. Come on up.[641.16][641.16](APPLAUSE).
Now, I'd like to invite the council to go down for a picture.
As our, as our department continues to grow, this is just a testament to the, to the work that these gentlemen do, ladies and gentlemen do. I know that we have a few in the audience, hopefully to be promoted soon. The, this is, this four promotions are stemmed from one promotion. It's a trickle-down effect in our department. When, when the fire chief retired, it caused a trickle-down effect of, of four additional promotions, so this is, is a, is a night to be well, to be honored, and be proud of. Congratulations to everyone, and thank you for your dedication.[716.82][716.82](APPLAUSE).
Be careful.
Care, oh my gosh. We're definitely gonna need EMS some night with this.
You got other rescuers here for you.
(INAUDIBLE).
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 Thank you all very much, and congratulations to each one. It was interesting, if you could have heard us talking up here before the meeting, the praise that was being given to our firefighters would have made everyone in this room proud, and we really do appreciate everything that you do every day, and the work that you do is certainly not underappreciated by this council and the residents of our city, so thank you very, very much.[880.82][880.82](APPLAUSE). We now move to our consent agenda. We have five items, items three through seven. Is there a motion to approve them unless somebody wants to pull an item? So, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tharp, second by Mr. Noble. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That goes to our regular agenda. We have one item, and that is a public hearing, first reading on ordinance 2025-06. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2025-06, first reading, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 1, and general, Article 3, district regulations, Article 4, supplemental district regulations, and Article 7, landscaping to revised definitions, standards related to impervious and previous surfaces and driveway requirements for residential properties, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, providing for an effective date, and for all other purposes.
Mr. Gallier, sir.
And I will actually use that opportunity to introduce our new zoning administrator, Linda Louis, so she's the project manager on this one, and will be presenting it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Linda Louis, zoning administrator for the record. This is first reading of ordinance number 2025-06. It's a city-initiated request to amend Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances, which is our city's zoning regulations, to provide standards for impervious, impervious surfaces and driveway requirements for residential properties. So, just to provide a quick overview on the matter and, and how we got here, the city has ongoing concerns with excessive impervious surface coverage on residential lots. This is primarily due to property owners not obtaining the necessary permits to comply with city regulations and to complete the work correctly. So, as you can see on the slide here, there are three images. The overextension of driveways, which leads to significant impervious surface coverage, does not allow for the natural percolation of water for the purposes of stormwater management, and that creates a greater potential for risks of flooding in residential areas. Pursuant to Section 1258 of the Code of Ordinances, all properties are required to provide onsite drainage and legal positive outfall to manage stormwater runoff. However, there are no clear standards or regulations in the zoning code that addresses how stormwater can be managed, so this has been an issue. And without proper standards and requirements in place to meet the drainage requirements of the city, it creates a lot of confusion and delays during the permitting process. So, the purpose of the text amendment is, is to ensure predictability for homeowners by clarifying the definitions and providing standards for pervious and impervious surfaces and driveway requirements. The standards will align the zoning code with existing drainage requirements, parking regulations, and department policy, and it'll also protect the city's infrastructure and neighborhoods from stormwater impacts. So, the text amendment is broken down into two parts. The first part is the definitions. The proposed changes to the definitions include changing lot coverage to building coverage, clarifying the definition for impervious surface, and creating a new definition for pervious surface. The purpose of amending the definitions is to provide clarity with the pervious and impervious surface standards when applying the standards and requirements so that there's no confusion. The second part of the text amendment addresses the standards for pervious and impervious surfaces and driveways. This includes establishing standards for maximum impervious surface coverage for residential lots. The table provided in the slide shows the maximum impervious surface coverages for the overall lot, as well as for the front yard of residential properties by percentages and by residential zoning districts. So, for example, the agricultural residential district has an overall impervious, maximum impervious lot coverage of forty percent, which means they are required to provide sixty percent pervious. For the front yard, which is measured from the front property line to the face of the building, the maximum impervious surface coverage within the front yard is forty percent, which means that any property owner would be required to provide sixty percent pervious. The percentages are based on staff's analysis of current code requirements and parcel analysis of residential lots. Staff has found that the percentages are consistent with observed conditions and the current policies and standards of the city. Additionally, the proposed maximum percentages do not impose greater restrictions than what's currently permitted and observed within the city, and impervious surface standards would enable the provision for pervious surfaces to meet the drainage requirements of Section 1258, which as, as mentioned, which would require properties to maintain onsite drainage. The next standard is establishing requirements for front yard pervious surface area, which are provided as percentages. The percentages are necessary to address requirements for drainage and onsite storm water, onsite stormwater management. This, the, in addition to establishing the percentages for the pervious surface requirement, the city also has established landscaping requirements for residential lots in terms of required trees and shrubs to be placed within the property. This standard would require at least one of the required trees to be planted within the front yard. This provision also enhances the appearance of residential properties and supports a comprehensive plan objectives for a more aesthetic and sustainable city. Another proposed standard would be to limit driveways to a maximum width of thirty feet, which aligns with current city policy for residential driveways. The city's policy allows a maximum width of twelve feet, however, a driveway can be expanded up to thirty feet if the property owner provides certification that onsite drainage can be met. So, this policy would, or, or would be aligned with the code requirements, and, and that's the reason for incorporating into the code, it's for clarity and consistency. The standard also acknowledges and accommodates the need for additional parking in residential areas. This helps to alleviate issues of parking and swales, which are designed to manage stormwater runoff and should not be obstructing swale areas that can interfere with the natural drainage. So, by allowing wider driveways, more parking can be accommodated within the property, and, and also discourage or, or minimize the amount of parking within the swale areas. The final standard in the proposed amendment is to incorporate the exemptions for synthetic turf per state statute for consistency between the statutory language, as well as the city code. This is to address a change in statutory language earlier this year, which would allow synthetic turf on single-family residential properties less than an acre in size. The installation must be consistent with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection standards in terms of materials, permeability, and drainage. However, this exemption would not be effective until the standards from FDEP are adopted, so until then, synthetic turf would not be permitted. So, just to quickly summarize, the proposed text amendment would align with the city's current policies and conditions observed. It provides clear standards for homeowners to easily follow and to ensure that the city's policies and requirements are met. It also consolidates existing policies and standards by ensuring required impervious parking and driveways are included in the impervious surface calculations, and it also strengthens onsite drainage requirements to address offsite runoff and inadequate drainage. In terms of review, the proposed text amendment was heard by the Development Review Committee, and the DRC recommended approval of the proposed text amendment. The Planning and Zoning Board also reviewed the proposed text amendment and unanimously approved the text amendment to council at its October 9th meeting. Based on staff's findings and analysis, staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2025-06 as staff has found that it meets the criteria for the zoning text amendments pursuant to the requirements in Section 16154B. And that concludes staff's presentation. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them at this time.
Nice job.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open this meeting to the public. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If not, any questions from the council? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-06.
We have a motion? Is there a second? Second by, motion by Ms. Dugo, second by Ms. Diaz?
Nope, Lahaney, Ms. Lahaney.
Ms. Lahaney.
Lahaney, ooh, sorry about that. So, congratulations, so that is your first second.
I've been trying. I've been trying. It's gonna be fun.
So, seeing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We have no discussion items. Now, the, the floor is open to public comments from anybody on any topic, so anybody from the public wishing to speak. Seeing none, we'll move to city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I do have a few things this evening. It was brought to our attention as following some meetings that we attended recently that during the last legislative session, that elected officials have been added to the list of, of, in the category of public records exemption, so I am going to be emailing you information on the clerk and comp, comp trollers' requests, commission on ethics, and the property appraisers, so if you do wish to complete those, please do complete them, and they can be submitted. Please also let us know if you wish to have your records from the city as well, so that we can notify HR on that. So, I'll send you an email with that information, but I just wanted to let you know that. Additionally, as you know, Commissioner Joel Flores was able to get a million dollars put in the budget for the development of a central county economic development master plan. We are still meeting on that. We did meet last week. The municipalities, Commissioner Flores was there, and county staff, and some of staff from the municipalities as well, were working on the scope of work, hoping that early next year, we should have it out, but we've talked about infrastructure, branding, annexation, corridor design, gateway, you know, vision zero plans, so there's a lot included in the scope of work. As soon as we have the scope of work complete and the language looks good, I will make sure to send that to you, so that you can take a look at it. We're hoping that our next meeting will be on the 12th of November in the afternoon. One of the things that are, as one of our next steps, is having a conversation with the school district. As you know, one of the things that the executive director of the Business Development Board has always said, you know, businesses want to come to areas where the schools are, are highly rated, so we are having that conversation with the superintendent, hoping that he can attend that meeting on the 12th, so Commissioner Flores is working on scheduling that. Additionally, today, we had our Central County Alliance meeting that includes the mayors and managers from the central communities, had a lot of conversation about the countywide transportation master plan. That survey is closed. One of the concerns is that really the response to the survey was not very high, but it looks like they are moving forward, even though there wasn't a lot of responses, and the attendance at the transportation meetings wasn't very high also, but we're, we're, we're still working through that, and the county is still working collaboratively with the municipalities on that. We did talk about property taxes and what the Tallahassee discussion is going to be, and, you know, we'll, we'll make sure, I'll make sure that I send a summary of some of those things to you as well. Upcoming meetings, in looking at our schedule for our upcoming meetings, we don't have anything on the agendas for the 17th of November, nor the 12, the 15th of December, so I'm asking the council that we only have our meeting tonight, and then we have our meeting on December the 1st for the month of December, but requesting to cancel those two meetings in November and December, the 17th of November and the 15th of December, if the council's okay with that.
Counsel, anybody opposed to that? All right.
Okay, and just some reminders, we do have our Veterans Day event on the 11th of November here at City Hall at 9:00 AM. Additionally, we have a food distribution. Want to thank staff that worked so quickly to coordinate and, and provide, and secure a partner for that. We are going to be partnering with Restoration Bridge for that food distribution. It is going to be on the 12th of November, from 10:00 AM to noon. We will start staging the area sometime around 7:30 in the morning. I do have to give a very, very big thanks to Commissioner Flores and his staff. Initially, Restoration Bridge only said that they could provide for about 250 families following a conver- Following a conversation with Commissioner Flores and his office, they will be providing for 1,000 families. So, it will be a, a very big distribution. We're working with PBSO on the logistics and we will be meeting with PBSO, one of the sergeants this week, to talk about the movement of traffic. But while it is an open day here at City Hall, we should be okay with the logistics. But there will be more to come and our Director of Communications will be sending out the food drive distribution information. Additionally, on our website and on social media today, the city did send out the Palm Beach County Food Finder information, the link for that, and also the Feeding South Florida Benefits and Emergency Services link. If you want to forward those or, or like the social media posts and also route people to the city's website, that information is on the website. I think that is it. That is it for me tonight. Thank you very much.
It's the D Attorney's report.
Nothing to add this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, we will start tonight with our newest member, Ms. Lehne. Any comments?
No comments. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Diaz.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'd like to start by welcoming Alisa. It's wonderful to have a neighbor and I'm looking forward to working with you. I'd also like to take a minute to thank our city manager, Andrea. When I called her last week with my concerns about the SNAP benefit pause, she immediately got to work and I think it was within 24 hours that the food distributions were planned and, and websites were being built. So, Andrea, thank you and thank your staff so much for that. And thank you to Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Once again, a fantastic trunk or treat, lots of fun. I think we had easily 1,000 more children than last year. But it's always a fun event and I just want to thank you for hosting that in the city of Green Acres. Thanks.
Ms. Dugo.
Just a quick thank you for all your time and service to everyone. And we all know who had the most fun at trunk or treat and ate all the candy. No, I'm only kidding. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Noble.
Thank you, everyone, for what they've been doing, participating within the city. That's all.
Mr. No, Mr. Tharp.
Thank you. Just to echo, thank you to PBSO. It was a great event. I, I don't know how many families and kids were at trunk or treat. I, I parked in a fire rescue spot. Luckily, chief didn't tell me, so I was thankful. It, there was a huge turnout, so thank you. I know that's a huge undertaking for everyone involved. Few, the food distribution event, I think we need 20 to 30 volunteers. Is that?
At this point right now, we're looking, because it is a workday, we're looking at the numbers. We're reaching out to Restoration Bridge, understanding that it's 1,000. They're providing enough for 1,000. We'll get, I'll get back to you on the numbers and what the need might be. We, we, we probably will need volunteers. But at this point right now, again, because we can have some of the department's public works is going to help out, fire rescue is going to help out, PBSO definitely is going to be assisting. So, I will definitely be back with the numbers, though.
All right, thank you. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. I just have two, two comments. First one is, again, the trunk or treat event. I was amazed at the size of the crowd when I got to the park. And also, we have to recognize the costumes that our council member and her husband, Ms. Diaz and Mike, were dressed up as Mario and Luigi. And their props.
I shaved for tonight.
Oh, that's true. You did, didn't you? So, the, the props that they used, Mike made by hand. And it was amazing. So, if you ever need any work done of any kind of construction thing, please call Ms. Diaz. They have a business now going of building props for events.
Perfect.
So, the other one is Wednesday from, I believe it's 11 to 1, is a soft opening of the new Pinecrest Bakery. So, if you're free and would like a good cup of coffee and a pastry, I am really excited about Pinecrest being part of the city. I think that's going to be an extremely successful business in this area. So, please consider coming that day. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, any?
We could have played a good joke on him, no.
All in favor, all opposed, we stand adjourned.